... The board of supervisors, regular meeting, September the 28th. The board, Mr. Miskowski?
Here.
Mr. Hodges?
Here.
Mr. Barber?
Here.
Mr. Morin?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Next item on the agenda is to review on the adoption of the meeting. No, we're going to silence first and then we'll have the order. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item we have on the agenda is to review on the adoption of the meeting. Mr. Chairman, under if we adopt the amended agenda that we have before us?
All right.
Motion made and promptly seconded, was there any discussion? Speaking on this Lawrence? Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Barber?
Aye.
Mr. Morin?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Next item you have on the agenda is comments by me to those sets tone during the meeting. First one we have fixed eight, concerning the Commissioner of Revenue's office. A great amount of misinformation has been circulating about the Commissioner of Revenue's office, some has been promulgated by the press, some by the Commissioner of Revenue's office. I'd like to clear up some of these things. You don't can hear me. Oh, you can't? Just clear the speaker. Say it loud, here. You're right in front of me. Yeah. Test, test. I know this comes back. Alright, that's good. Okay, I'll start over. A great amount of information, misinformation has been circulating about the Commissioner of Revenue's office. Some has been promulgated by the press and some by the Commissioner of Revenue's office. I'd like to clear up some of these things before the meeting starts. County staff reported to the board at the August 24th meeting, status of the reassessment and assessors finding, at no time did staff or the assessor state that 500 properties were not being taxed. Instead, the statements made included, number one, 469 new parcels added in this reassessment. Number two, accessory structures such as pools, porches, and light are not added to the tax roll over the past six years. Number three, 14 buildings were not on the tax rolls and the recommendation by the assessor was to catch fees by entering the building plans and spec information into the appraisal software as they are constructed. Number four, warehouse buildings values were not assessed previously and/or not included in the tax roll though an office or storage area was assessed. Number five, land values were not equalized according to the fair market value. Number six, commercial property values were missing the consideration of the sales comparison approach and income approach, instead were valued only on the cost approach. Number seven, tax exempt properties were grossly under assessed. The new appraisal software being implemented will only improve the quality of data and allow for better accountability when property changes are made. Commissioner of Revenue and our staff included in the procurement process, selection, and award of the new appraisal software. Commissioner's refusal to participate in work toward implementation was simply that, a refusal. Testing of data within the test system was to be completed by the Commissioner of Revenue Department, but instead the Finance Department completed this task. The test period had nothing to do with the reassessment, but only to do with how it would look in our new system. The Commissioner of Revenue's staff have had access to it and had to the test system. They will have complete access to the fully implemented system when it goes live as well. At the June 22nd meeting, the board was made aware of the outstanding amount of linked with taxes which raised flags concerning the Commissioner of Revenue's office. County auditing firm, excuse me, Robinson Farmer Cox was brought into the perform and agree to plan procedures with AUP, the board review of both offices. The purpose of this review was the operations, internal controls, and policies and procedures. At no time was fraud or illegal activity voiced as a concern. Treasury's office complied with this AUP that the Commissioner of Revenue declined to participate. She also blatantly refused to participate in this performance audit that the board scheduled for her department on September 2nd and 3rd by closing down her office completely to all staff and citizens of the county. Board of Supervisors, Board of Supervisors has authority, the Virginia Code 15 dot 2 dash 1230, to gain access to whatever information is deemed appropriate in constitutional officers' offices. Attorney General's opinion and the Commissioner has referenced has no bearing on the Board of Supervisors seeking information on the processes and procedures of any constitutional office. Commissioner's refusal to participate in the work toward implementation was simply that. A refusal, testing of data within the test system was to be completed by the Commissioner of Revenue Department, instead the Finance Department. The Commissioner of Revenue sent out a letter dated September 15th to land use participants providing misinformation concerning how unbundling of parcels will impact their application fee and taxes paid. The new assessments set up each parcel with their own account number rather than a sub account to a parent account. If the land use was used set up correctly by the Commissioner of Revenue's office, then no action will be required of the property owners. The only issue that may arise is that the one acre residence parcel was included in land use program, which legally it should be. In that instance, the property owner will need to work with the Commissioner of Revenue's office to address how she will handle the error moving forward. Though I'm sure you will continue to see misinformation circulating, I would stress to you that this board supervisors and the county administrator do have respect for all of our constitutional officers. What it is at issue when the constitutional officer fails to perform duties, the level of professionalism, and due diligence that this board supervisors expects from all county departments. That's the first. The second one is concerning the Treasurer's office. At the June 22nd board meeting, the board was made aware of the amount of linked with taxes due to the county. The Treasurer was questioned by the board. He stated he had not sought legal recourse for several years. Board was concerned that if this critical activity was not being addressed, there may be other procedural gaps within the Treasurer's office. The county's auditing firm, Robinson Farmer Cox, was brought into perform and agree to plan procedures to board review of both the Treasurer's office and the Commissioner of Revenue's office. The direction was given to the auditors was to review the operations, internal controls, and policies and procedures. At no time again was fraud or illegal activity voiced as a concern. Treasury's office complied with this AUP and the auditors found several fines. Majority dealt with lack of procedures that are put in place to protect the Treasurer's office and staff and county funds. These findings include, number one, have an individual independent of the Treasurer's office review the bank reconciliations. Number two, processed cash transfers only went back up as included to substantiate action. Number three, limit the ability just of staff to avoid revenue transactions and remove penalties and interest. Number four, limit the number of Treasurer employees with the authority to sign checks. The Board of Supervisors voiced their concerns at the August 24th meeting by passing Resolution 20 dash 50R, instructing the Treasurer to collect the linked with taxes within three years of that date. The board also directed the Treasurer to grant the Director of Finance access to bank accounts. With access to bank accounts, the Director of Finance has since found the Treasurer has transferred more funds to the county schools than was appropriated to them. This occurred over the past five years, but the majority occurring within the past three years. When the Director of Finance questioned transfer versus the appropriation the board made, the Treasurer has stated to the Director of Finance that he looks at the school's checking account and transfers funds to cover expenses that does not tie back to the appropriation approved by the Board of Supervisors. The Treasurer further stated that it is not that his responsibility to manage the spending of schools and the schools should not be spending more than appropriated. That it is up to him to make sure the expenses hitting the bank are covered for the schools. Treasurer is correct in stating that he is responsible for paying legal warrants, but per Virginia Code 22 dot 1 dash 1 of 15, Treasurer or another fiscal agent of each school division shall render each one to the school board a statement of funds in his hands available for school purposes. The school's fiscal agent does not currently have, nor has had in the past, access to any of these bank accounts except for the health and coverage fund. If the school's fiscal agent is to be responsible for managing the school's cash accounts as well as financial system accounts, then that will require the Treasurer to grant access to the bank accounts. When a Treasurer leaves office, a turnover audit is required by Virginia Code. The turnover audit will take place September the 28th through September the 3rd this week. Though the county's auditing firm Robinson Farmer Cox will be on site as well as the Virginia Auditors of Public Accounts, the turnover audit is required to ensure all funds are accounted for and reconciled prior to turning over to the banking Treasurer. This will occur again in February, when a new Treasurer is elected. The overpayment to the schools will be part of the turnover audit. If it is found that the overpayment did occur, then the county will seek to seek re- recompense for those funds. The AUP report on the turnover audit should provide information needed by the Board of Supervisors and the county school board to move forward in requesting access and procedural support from the Treasurer's office moving forward. The Board of Supervisors and county expense administration commitment to improving government processes and creating more transparency for the citizens at the heart of both reviews of two constitutional offices. Though you're being told otherwise, I hope you will allow the board and administration to work through these processes with the goal to improve the overall integrity of our local government. Thank you. Next item we have on the agenda is public comment period. We have one opportunity, three minutes for individual or five minutes if you're speaking for a group. Please state your name and your address in the county. Open public comment period. Do you get the update?
I have ended one. I have the Treasurer Revenue. We have, no, we have, something gentleman. That's not so many people. Good evening. So I'll kick this off. My name is Brian Hodges. I live in the second district. And we have two individuals who have served here and will end up taking more money brought from county with their retirements that will come out of the county because both of them are ending up retired. One's already announced it, the other one soon will be, simply because both of them have lacked to do their jobs. Since the beginning, they have avoided and basically mocked the entire county on what is being done in their offices. And it's ridiculous. It's about time that we uncovered it. And while it may not be criminal, it's definitely lazy. In the civilian world where I work, both of them would have been fired already. I wouldn't put up with it in my company, and I don't believe I would have put up with it in the military either. So both of them need to just leave and be done with it and let us start over with what needs to be done and not hold two back-to-back special elections because that's what's going to end up happening. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Belinda Brison-Don and I live in Kennington Development in Ailit. And several of our residents, more than several actually, had some concerns about our water bill. So I have a statement here I'd like to read about that. So I'm here to represent our homeowners who, several are here tonight, y'all raise your hand if you're here. Okay. And concerning our bi-monthly water bills from Hampton Roads Utility Billing Service. Each invoice shows the actual gallons used, the minimum charge based on the number of days in the billing cycle, and if being assessed by King William County of $60 every two months. When we have inquired about the $60 charge, the county staff replied, "That's just the way it is." No other explanation was given. When we asked Hampton Roads Utility Company, they referred us back to King William as they say they have nothing to do with the charge since it is assessed by the county. There are currently over 200 occupied homes in Kennington with more being built every day. So that equates to $360 per household per year times a 200, that's at $72,000 a year that the county is collecting. To cite an example, to make it a little more personal, I'll use my own usage, but of course this would be for most anybody. I went and used the last four billing statements from November 2019 up to July this year. I am a single-family homeowner, so it's just me and I work full-time. So these figures are probably low compared to most homes that would have multiple members in the family. So, for example, the total number of gallons that I used during this period was 22,214 for a total of $571.69. But wait, according to King William County, I was charged for using 46,214 gallons. So that's the 6,000 gallons times four bi-monthly statements, that's 24,000 gallons billed but not used. So summarize, the period mentioned from November through July, I was billed the 46,214 gallons, but my usage was 22,514. So we as homeowners of King William are very concerned about this charge and we are respectfully asking our Board of Supervisors, specifically Mr. Greenwood and our Ailit Supervisor, for justification and a satisfactory explanation of this billing issue. Obviously, we're all in agreement that these charges do appear outrageous and charge unfairly to our household and for us being taxpayers of the county. In addition, really, the issue of water conservation is also a concern. How does this system of billing us for more than we use encourage our residents to use less, not more? It does not. So the questions we would like to address or review for an informed response would be, and I just had a quick question, should I just read through these and then, in other words, I don't stop and allow you to answer, right?
No, we don't answer, just we'll take care of it.
Okay, that's what, uh-huh. So my question is, where, when was this policy adopted? When Kennington was first established in about 2008, as far as I understand, or prior to its development? Is this charge assessed to all households in the county or only for our residents in Kennington? And really, why was it set up this way? And how was this figure determined and where are these monies being applied? On a somewhat related issue, when a new resident moved to King William County, we were charged for a $200 deposit for a water bill. And this money is kept for two years before being refunded back. When I first heard anything about this, because I'll be in Kennington two years, actually, next month, when I asked about this, because I just thought it was exorbitant, I was told you'll get it back when you move. I stated I'm not moving because I'm not a renter, I just purchased a home in the county. The next call I made was to ask that this deposit, once refunded, is returned with interest, because some utility companies do that. That answer was a definite no. King William County has many ways of assessing its homeowners, and when we look at the infrastructure, it does not equate to the taxes, fees, and deposits made to your treasury. So thank you for this opportunity to address these important services to the residents in our community. And I have, I have my bill to, you know, to, to meet that.
Yes, you can leave it.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Uh-huh, thank you.
My name is Mr. Purchase. I live at 334 Sacklin Lane. I'm here in regards to a couple of issues. My wife and I go to a year and a half to pass from Northern Virginia. By the way, I have a 35-year Northern Virginia, two jurisdictions in Northern Virginia, local government employee. So I've worked in local government my entire adult life. And when we moved here, my plan was to go to my fine makers, shoot my guns, go camping, and never come to this building unless I need to pay a bill. Well, it's a bill that's probably here tonight. We came home from vacation and I opened up an envelope that has a $1,000 personal property tax on RV. You guys realize that Prince William County charges zero for recreational vehicles? Zero. That's where my vehicle was before I moved down here. I was spoiled. But, you know, I believe that taxes have a purpose. They allow to pay for our fine police department, provide money for the chairs, you know, for the fire department and such. But let's be honest, King William County is not parrot's county. A thousand dollars for the convenience of parking my RV on my property and driving it two and a half miles on King William Road, because I go to Caroline County line out to 95, six or seven times a year, to me is astronomical. The fact that you're charging for an RV that uses no services, isn't that the idea of taxes? To pay for services? That you're charging me a thousand dollars for the convenience of keeping my RV on my property is, is, is just, it's beyond belief. The other thing I wanted to talk about real quickly, like I said, my goal was to just stay there and never come back and pay for taxes. I became involved, started looking at things. And I'd like to speak about something that you brought up, sir, and the previous gentleman brought up. We have an elected official who openly mocked a citizen of this county. But not only did she mock that citizen, three of her employees did. Now, I know that this board and the county administrator have no control over an elected official. We as citizens do though. Okay? But those three employees, let me tell you something, my 35 years, if I'm mocked openly on government property during government time, or whatever time, mocked a citizen, I would have been fired. I would have been told to bring my keys, bring my ID, bring my badge, and plop it on her desk and get the hell out of there. That's what I would have been told. From all stories, those three employees are still employed, still doing fine. There was, there was no, you know, no, no consequences to their actions, but the fact that their supervisor, an elected official, had them do that, just tells me all I need to know about her and her office and how it's run. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
Yep, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dawn Harris. I have been a resident of King William County for over 30 years. The reason for me speaking this evening is not only have a personal, but also on a professional level. All the conjecture that I've heard this evening about the assessments and the audits really caused me great concern. These are preliminary findings. None of the information has been presented, nor has been publicized or finalized. Anyone who works in any kind of accounting capacity understands that a draft or a preliminary audit at any time is confidential. That information never should have been publicized. It wouldn't have caused all the people here to have been here tonight speaking their mind when they're concerned. That's my first concern. And I'd like to know and hold the person or people accountable who released this information. It's a confidential county information. You don't have an opportunity to rebut any of the preliminary findings. Has the purpose enough to seek out inconsistencies? My second comment is, this new assessment office, is this individual one employee from Brightmonts, Sea Chastain? And if it is, then your own HR policies have not been followed in the county, which I thoroughly believe. If this is a contractor, then the information that's been publicized in the newspapers has been correct. Either way, I think it was a quick deal. Anybody gets hired because they, their preliminary findings that we have $2 million, we can get you $2 million, give me a candidate, you'll probably give me 150. So I think that this all needs to be vetted out. If this contract has been signed, I think you all need, whoever is responsible, whether it's you or the county administrator, someone needs to review that. And when talking about contracts, I understand that the contract for the reassessment software, there is some type of a contract penalty for non-use. Again, someone needs to be involved with contract law. If the county does not have a lawyer, which I assume you do, on retainer, then they need to be reviewing these contracts before they're signed. I have signed many contracts in the last 42 years of my employment. I have never signed a contract that at any time been penalty for non-use of the software application. I've worked for very large corporations. This is unknown to me. In my final comments, I think that everyone kind of needs to take a break, breathe in, realize that all things can be solved. And if we're going to start auditing department, let's spot everyone in the county. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening. My name is?
Yes, if you could state it, it's in the district you're from.
Yes, good evening. My name is Margaret O'Hara, I live in the third district in Ailit. And as someone who is more embraced in King William County, I've been following the meal tax debacle that's been before this board for the past several months. I understand that the business involved and the members of the board have been publicly stating that the Commissioner is responsible for many of the legal fees that the county attorney incurred defending the meal's tax that the Board of Supervisors adopted. The county attorney works at the instructions of the county administrator and the Board of Supervisors, excuse me, and the Board of Supervisors. The county attorney takes care of what is instructed to them by the other people in this room. And the Commissioner of Revenue made a statement that Mr. Couch owed the county a meal's tax and based on her extensive research and survey of other local counties, she reported that. The county administrator asked the county attorney to opine on this issue and his opinion with that ruling tree farms did owe meal's tax in King William County. And as a result of that business continual attempt to avoid paying these meal taxes, the taxpayers of King William's money is being wasted when it could be put to much better use. As a taxpayer in this county, I would like to see my tax, my tax dollars being put to better use and for Mr. Couch to base taxes. I would also implore, implore anyone representing the local media here today to further investigate these issues and present perspective from both sides of this issue and give the Commissioner a fair, fair opportunity to respond. I have known Sally Pearson for more than 20 years. She has a dedicated public servant who has invested in our community for decades. She raised two children here, was involved in the schools, volunteers for time with different community organizations, and does a phenomenal job as governor of the county. I'm also a practicing attorney and I cannot think of a situation where I've been put ever where a decision has, I've made a decision on behalf of a client where such an extreme measure such as eliminating a position in Ms. Pearson's office was done on behalf of the decision made by the county attorney. So I asked this board to restore the position to her office at this time.
Good evening. My name is Lou Johnson. I live at 770 Real Road, West Pointe District. And I'm here because I saw the negative article in the town water review last week. I was shocked because the Commissioner of Revenue that I know is so outstanding and extremely professional. I'm a realtor with joint defined properties, practicing in Commonwealth, I just did the last 40 years. In my practice, I make a package to sell land, acreage, farms, waterfront, timber, and so forth. Because of this, I've sold properties in many counties. New Kent, Northumberland, Charles City, Davis City, Surry, all of these counties. I have dealings with the commissioners of revenue. You here in King William are very lucky. No fair have I encountered anyone more helpful, more professional than Sally Pearson. I have never had anything to do dealing with her or her uncle. She is knowledgeable, friendly, and very professional. All of us here near these two rivers, so you all know about the tides, about the currents, and sometimes about the undertow. That is very dangerous to swimmers. In a book I read years ago called The World According to God, Don Urban in his book, Urban called this scary negative current the undertow. In my opinion, there's recently a lot of undertow in King William County. Why is that? You have a new administration? And I understand it's had a lot of upheavals. Sally Pearson has always done her job well and professionally. She is not the cause of the undertow. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Julie Sturgis, and I live at 13857 West River Road. I recently built my dream home in King William County on the map. During the building process, Sally Pearson and her office, assisted by husband Steve and I, in navigating several issues regarding our property on this road. My experience with Sally and her office and her staff has always been professional and courteous. So I wanted to lend my voice in support of her office and thank them for helping us. And just to register my dismay at the articles in the Tidewater Review that, you know, from what I have seen so far, seem to need some further investigation and further review and understanding. So I may be through.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Cindy Hitchcock. I'm here to represent my company, Just Buster's Cleaning Service. I live at 9329 Comiskey Crest Drive in Pennsville. And I'm very nervous right now. I haven't been in this room for over two years. I'm here today to share a very unprofessional experience. In 2018, I had the county administrator. I had the contract four years prior to the 2018 contract. Bobby as a finance manager at that time even gave me a letter of recommendation and how fair my price was and what a great job he did. I had no issues. My contact person before 2018 was Beth Sandwich. She was very professional. She wouldn't listen to any drama of my employees, and she would prompt them to go to me as it should be. My inspections were good. If there were any issues, I would take care of them immediately. I went over and above my contract and would have done anything to appease the county. I had a special interest here in the county. My son was going to school here since he was a little boy, and my reputation as a woman in a small local business meant everything. When I was awarded the contract in 2018, I was offered a much lower price of a bid with much more square footage. So the only logical thing I could do is take on the square footage myself and cut one hour from the day work from the employees. That didn't settle very good with them, and they would complain to my contact person, Cindy Hittenbog. Cindy Hittenbog complained to Bobby that I was mistreating my employees by cutting their hours. I started getting bad inspections and being written up. Cindy Hittenbog said to give my employees their hour back, which was very irritating to me, them telling me how to run my business. I did give them their hour back, but several times when I went to check and look to see what they were doing, they were in this very room hiding 45 minutes before their shift was over, sitting on the floor waiting to go home. When I disciplined them, I was disciplined. My contract was terminated four months after I had it, and my employees were hired immediately of my contract being terminated. I tried to reason with Bobby and told her about the non-compete that my employees signed. She said it wasn't worth the paper it was written on, and she could hire and fire as she pleased. I hired those employees and gave them jobs. I trained them. For several years to my satisfaction, she should have hired her own employees and trained them. There's no doubt in my mind that this county is paying much more in salaries, insurance, et cetera, than they were paying me. Here I'm getting written up for issues being done by the same employees that were hired. It's very mind-boggling and disturbing to know that someone thinks that they have the power to run over a small people that do whatever they can do just because they sit in a higher seat. We need a county administrator that is honest, and just because they don't like somebody, get rid of them. They need to treat everybody fairly and not listen to unnecessary gossip and drama, to be logical and get the truth of the matter. I'm sure the county, I'm sure the county understands my feelings. And if you would like to hear anything more, I couldn't say much, you're welcome to contact me. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris Couch, representing customers of Green Tree Farms. I live in the 5th district. For a decade, I had great service in the commissioner of revenue's office. Almost every year, I had inherent my assessments, and we worked resolved. Last year, a few years ago, I started this business, setting the business up was fine. And I believe we went through and we reviewed the situation in great detail, the classification of my business, and we established that the meal tax was not applicable to the product that I was selling. I was a food manufacturer regulated by VDAX and had a courier service, something very new and unique and different, an innovative business, if you will. Let's fast forward then. You know, a year ago, I went and sat down with this fascinating area. I said, there's some issues with commissioner of revenue's office. I'd like us to sit down with the new county attorney and discuss this. I think there are, I would go through a line-by-line code review if we'd like, right? I was never given that opportunity. And one of Mr. Nick Roberts' first assignments was to document this famous memo about the applicability of the meals tax on the product I sell. This memo has two very specific things that were missing. That's why I told you a year ago, this was incomplete. It didn't even address single serving, which is very closely stated in the state code and in the county code. And it didn't address the fact that food manufacturers are exempt from the meal tax in the state code. Okay, so I was gonna bring a five-gallon bucket of salad and say, is this a single-serving salad? Because we had, I've asked the question, if my salad is a single-serving, what is a multi-serving? We can't answer the question, right? And I've asked the question, why does it say in the state code that food manufacturers are exempt from applying the meal's tax? We can't answer that question. Do we not recognize VDAX? Do we not recognize the Department of Health? I don't know. Instead of bringing that five-gallon bucket of salad, I decided to, two weeks ago, I got another memo from Mrs. Pearson. And in this, we had a completely new fabricated story that says, when I first went to the commissioner of revenue's office, I described my business as a wholesale vegetable seller that I'd be selling vegetables I grow on my farm at local farmers markets. You don't sell wholesale vegetables at a farmer's market. It's a retail market. And that was never my business vision. My business vision, as you can see on this first page, written two days later, submitted the next business date to VDAX, describes it as a farm salad delivery business where I'll use locally sourced produce to assemble a different handcrafted salad on weekly basis. Salad prepared using produce grown on my farm as well as other locally sourced products. Once assembled in the food preparation area, these prepackaged salads be stored on site at the walking pool or be delivered direct to customers located in the greater Richmond, Virginia area. That is exactly my business as of this day. Nothing has changed except for Mrs. Pearson's stories to continue to try to weave together stories, their narrative. Next page. Also in this memo, she references these new meal tax guidelines. Well, you will see in these meal tax guidelines that there are references to state code that doesn't exist. They were published 11 years, five months, 18 days after the ordinance was put into place. 11 years? Are you kidding me? There's no mention of any type of business in there. And what really gets me is when you look at the taxable items and the exempt items, it says exempt factory prepackaged food. Okay, food manufacturing. The definition of factory is something that's manufactured. I'm a food manufacturer. It's exempt. It also says prepackaged or bagged salads. Exempt. It's a prepackaged salad. What are we arguing about? This is crazy. Third, third page. Look at the people that have looked at this situation in detail. We can have other people come up here that have skimmed across the details. This is not a tax that I'm not paying. This is a tax I'm not charging. The King William County customers, they're already taxed enough. If you can't justify the tax to me, justify it to them, right? I had delegate wine. Believe his politics or not, I had him and his legislative director, come, sit down on the farm, walk through, see my food manufacturing facility, and we sat there and we did that line-by-line, right? The legislative director said, this is ridiculous. Why would this county not want to support you? And how can they make a basis that you're a food manufacturer? You're not a restaurant, right? And you're selling multi-servings now. The FDA defined serving size, whether it's in the code or not, right? It's not up to individual commissioners across the state. Mrs. Pearson says that she's talked with other commissioners that agree with her. I've talked with other commissioners that agree with me, right? The FDA agrees with me. VDAX agrees with me. Farm-to-consumer legal defense fund agrees with me. Hundreds of my customers agree with me, dozens of them in King William County. Who doesn't agree with me? Sally Pearson and Mr. Nick Roberts. $40,000 we spent on this. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Robert Coker. I live in Banqueline, Virginia. I was invited here tonight by Mr. Harper. A couple of weeks ago, I received a bill, or not a bill, excuse me, a letter from King William saying that my parcels were not being taxed. I have three parcels in Banqueline. I immediately called Ms. Pierce Pearson, and she informed me that everything was fine. But 25 years ago, when I had two parcels, they were separate. Then I bought a third one about two years later, and it was separate. When I called Sally, she said to, we will combine them so you have one bill instead of three bills, right? Which we did. And for the last 22 years, I had been paying for all three parcels. I don't know who the assessor was, never seen anybody. Nobody identified themselves that they were on my property. And I received that. But I have always paid, here's two checks in here right now, that are headed to Baltimore for some reason. Addressed King William. I guess we borrowed money from Baltimore. But I guess we don't need it. It just seems like there's a lot of under being programmed in King William right now. Anyway, I always paid my bill two months in advance as soon as I did, which are right here. My parcels have always been together as one. Again, I don't know who's doing the assessment, but I don't have three separate parcels that have not been taxed. If you need this, I'll give it to you now. I even paid with a stamp. I didn't stand with it. Anyway, thank you. I've had a business for 45 years in Richmond. Never have had a problem with taxes during moving to King William. King William County. County, what is it the, what I called you, I actually brought it with me. It was the Department of Finance. It was signed by Ms. Pearson. Thank you. Have a good night. We'll get rid of these two.
You said that you got a letter from the commissioner of revenue saying you were delinquent on the taxes.
I got one saying that my parcels, there were several parcels that were not taxed, and my parcels were not being taxed.
Yeah, that's what I thought. It wasn't the letter saying that.
Right. It's the same letter.
Not a delinquent until December.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna read that to the public too. I have so much to read. Anybody else? You already addressed the latter. No one? Oh, yeah, it's the meat truck's wolf. Do we have any people online that wish to speak via Zoom?
I'd like to speak to Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hey, my name is Benjamin Shoemaker, and I live out in the 4th district. Mr. Chairman and Board, first of all, I want to thank you for taking the time this evening to clarify all the hype news of the recent audits. I want to also thank you both, both the board and the county administrator, for performing their due diligence and governance in these matters. I want to thank you for the transparency that you have kept between the county and the citizens. Also look forward to having the audit findings addressed and remediated to meet the best practices in 2020 standards. I think we need to come to current standards. I, for one, am encouraged to see the additional oversight in these areas. Keep up the good work, Board. I appreciate it. Thanks again, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anyone else? I will now close about the counter here. Next item we have on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to refer to the consent agenda.
What's that? Motion made and properly segmented to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Saying nothing, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Mr. Warren?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hodgins?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Next item we have on the agenda is presentations, 9A. We have commissioner of revenue comments with Sally Pearson, commissioner of revenue. So everybody does know your position revenue, but could you state your address now since you sold your property and you now live in Richmond?
No, it was at 431 Lady Long Road in Banqueline, Virginia. 23106.
Thank you.
I'm gonna redo this though.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I sort of feel like I've been tarred and feathered up here. But anyway, I'm gonna start my presentation with a letter from Mr. Stephen Wompler from Wompler &amp; Eames. And I guess you can, I'll start this, okay. Now, dear Mrs. Pearson, in review of recent events and media reports, we are compelled to write regarding the 2015 general reassessment for King William County. Our company was contracted by King William County to conduct the 2015 reassessment, and it was a thoroughly reviewed and approved process. When it was completed, all involved parties considered the 2015 reassessment to be highly successful for the 2015 reassessment. King William County commissioned an oversight committee to analyze each phase of the reassessment. This committee included Trenton Funkhouser, County Administrator, Beth Dandridge, financial specialist, and Troy Dingham, financial service manager. There were numerous quality control checks put in place to examine all values prior to the end of the reassessment. Monthly meetings between our staff, county administration, and the oversight committee were conducted to review collected data and overall final values. Field visits were conducted by Beth Dandridge and Troy Dingham on occasion to verify data and values. The committee had to approve each component of the reassessment prior to any payment being made in Wompler Eames appraisal group. Wompler Eames physically visited each property in King William County, including the rocks and paper mill, and provided a full appraisal report on that property, including all new improvements as was required in our contract. Wompler Eames appraisal group certified our values at the end of the reassessment as a standard practice. In our 25 years of reassessment experience as a company, and in the 120 reassessments our company has conducted, at no time have we asked a Commissioner of Revenue to verify the information we collected or certify our values. We always sign the book and warranty our work. Any company that would require a Commissioner to certify the values at the end of every assessment is not warranting their work. He goes on to describe their work for the past 25 years of work in the Commonwealth. And he ends his letter by saying that we recognize that changes in county administration and staff, along with ulterior motives by individuals and disinformation supplied to media outlets, can create challenging circumstances. This is our belief and experience that given time and correct information, the truth rises to the top. And we believe this will be the case here, and we are willing to work with King William County to assist in these matters. He also brings out that it is unfortunate that you and our work have been denigrated by others. We have paid our attention with particular interest to comments made by the current reassessment contract regarding your office and the 2015 reassessment. The following should be noted. Stephen Chastain worked for Wompler Eames and was responsible for residential commercial and reviewing during the 2015 reassessment for King William County. Mr. Chastain was responsible for the unbundling of parcels that is referred in the current media reports as a problem during the 2021 reassessment. When critiquing the 2015 reassessment in the office of Commissioner of Revenue, Mr. Chastain is essentially criticizing his own work. I contacted Mr. Coker and others to let them know that they were part of the 500 parcels that were characterized as being untaxed by, in the title of the review article. That was a reason for my contact. And it was actually the 255 on a spreadsheet twice, and these were all parcels that were taxed, but they were taxed as one parcel. Mr. Chastain has managed to not only acquire the contract for 2021 reassessment for King William County for his company, Bright Minds Inc., but has also managed to acquire a well-paid position with King William County. We have not seen anything like this in our four decades of experience. The Commissioner of Revenue is a constitutional officer whose duties are specifically set out in the Constitution of Virginia, the Code of Virginia, and local ordinances. I'm gonna get a simple order and start the PowerPoint.
So this is not going directly back to PowerPoint, is what you're correct?
Right. We haven't started with Mr. PowerPoint yet. Is that on, it's gonna be shared? Can we share that?
No, review.
All right. Virginia is governed by the Dillon Rule, which requires a narrow interpretation of the power conferred on local governments by the General Assembly and state code. I was elected Commissioner of Revenue in 1994, and King William entrusted me at that time to assess local property taxes fairly and ethically, and I take that trust very seriously. I raised my family here, and it is where I give them my life's work, because I believe in this community and the people here and all they have to offer. I stand before you tonight to respectfully request that you reverse the action recommended by the county administrator last month to unfund and authorize state supported position in my office and reallocate those funds to help an assessor's office under the county administrator's direction. In Virginia, constitutional officers are specifically granted authority to manage their offices and duties that are assigned to them under the Virginia Constitution, state statutes, and local ordinances, so that they are checks and balances to government. The Virginia Compensation Board allocates funding to the constitutional offices based on appropriations made available by the General Assembly through the Annual Appropriations Act. The allocations are made based on staffing measures reported annually by the constitutional office during their annual budget submission to the Compensation Board. And these results are available online, and I have excerpts from some of those reports in the presentation. In the action that was taken last month, the county administrator requested the board to supervise us to essentially unfund a position that they approved in the local budget for this year, and that has been authorized by the Virginia Compensation Board and partially funded through appropriations from the Virginia General Assembly. And when that position is unfunded, you will no longer get the comp board funding for that position. It doesn't go to the new office. We have all known that there have been inadequacies of the current yet antiquated financial system and the appraisal software system. And that is why the county had taken steps to move to the newer software systems. My office and I have worked to the best of our ability to make do with this system since the 1980s is when this system was put in place in King William County. And we can only use the tools that it's given to us. I requested another person in my budget, because King William has grown, and we are feeling some growing pains in my office to keep it up with the work. So I was a little disappointed to lose a position. My office and I have been unjustly maligned by misinformation released by the county administrator of finance for last month to justify the unfunding that violates state statutes. We did not perform the last 2015 reassessment. We, the county contracts with an outside firm to perform these reassessments, and the Commissioner of Revenue's office must remain separate from them, because we can't interfere with their work. We have to, we can give them information, and they can give us information such as new construction information, but we can only be so involved in a reassessment process because that is, that is their work, and we need to remain, it's part of the checks and balances of government that we have. We are not responsible for the reassessment. The contracted company from the outside performs the reassessment. So all of the findings about the 2015 reassessment that were being portrayed as errors made by my office was made by the prior contractor for King William County, and Bright Minds, Steve Chastain, worked for this company. So I really felt blindsided by the accusations, and I don't think I explained the separation of duties very well at the time. I think by saying I wasn't involved in the reassessment, that maybe there was a misunderstanding. So I have a timeline that kind of goes over how it normally works with a reassessment. Usually, I am more involved. But in this reassessment, county administrator hired a deputy out of my office, who I had actually sent to assessment school and had a lot of knowledge about the assessment process, and I felt like that liaison really helped us with the reassessment, and everything was going very well until she had returned to leave, and that's kind of when communication stopped. But I first want to talk about these audits a little bit. So a lot's been said about the audits, and it was, the request in the audit, there's AG opinions that say that this type of audit cannot be performed, and my association had advised me not to permit this action. We've just been through two audits. We had the auditor public accounts come in, and also we've been through the county's annual PAPA audit, and there were no findings. And why would you do a procedural audit when you're getting ready to go into a new system to establish only procedures? It seemed like it was more of a witch hunt, in this case, looking for air of things to find about our office. And after I saw the way the treasurer was treated at the last meeting, yeah, I definitely didn't want that preliminary audit findings recorded in that very public way. I think if someone is paid to come in and paid $17,500 to come in and find something, they're gonna find something to write you up for. I've been Commissioner for 26 years. I've gone through two audits a year, annual audits a year, and not to mention the audits that are performed by my own association or our credentials, and there have never been any findings of any sort of problems in our office. So I have included in your packet a copy of the the PAPA audit from Brownman Edwards from last year, and there's no, there's no findings in that one, and also the auditor public account audit that we just received on August 10th of 2020. Again, there was no findings in that audit. It's the AG opinion. That's the audit from auditor public accounts. Yes, and again, we have the two yearly audits, and there is no authority provided in the code that would allow a locality enforcement operational audit, and there is no requirement that allows such an activity. Based on my assessment of the reasoning for this audit, I have decided not to allow it. Again, we were going through software conversions, a lot going on, not to mention a pandemic and a reassessment, finishing up, trying to do beta tests of the new software, which we did complete those, a couple of my staff did the beta test. The thing that I had a problem with is I was asked to certify those values in the beta review by the IT director. And that is where I had a problem with this whole thing. I didn't know, because when I asked the contractor if the values that were in that beta review were his values, because that's what we were told, because Emily, who was automatically, mapped those new values in there. She said it was the reassessment values. So when you're looking at testing a software, you kind of need to know what you're looking at to be able to see if it's working correctly or not. It didn't match the values that we had in our legacy system, and the values, when I asked Mr. Chastain about a couple of values, he said that he didn't do his work in that system, wasn't gonna certify in that system. So there was nobody there to answer our questions about where these values that were in the beta system were located. And in about that time, we were having weekly meetings with division software about the beta review, and then they canceled all the meetings for the month. So there was no one to ask, no one answered our questions. So, I mean, that was our whole issue. I would have been happy, I mean, we want to be involved. This is something we use all the time, and I would have been happy to answer any questions, but nobody even asked me. The first I heard that there was any kind of issue was right before the board meeting last month in August. So I just think there's been a total miscommunication, and I hope it's something that we can miss. All right, I wanted to talk a little bit about these alleged untaxed parcels that we discussed a little bit. The title, Title Review published an article that said that the reassessment revealed that nearly 500 properties weren't included in the county's system, and some weren't taxed. The Commissioner of Revenue was not giving this information prior, therefore had to submit a FOIA request in order to determine which properties were being reported as untaxed. It was then determined that the article was in fact misinformed, and research shows that each property was in our system and taxed. I didn't know that anyone was saying that these taxes were not taxed for up to a decade. Also, when I submit the FOIA request, what I received was two spreadsheets which showed 244 account numbers, 12134, 12378, that were highlighted as not being taxed under the sheet titled All New Accounts 2021. Some account numbers were highlighted on a second spreadsheet titled Unbundled New Accounts 2021 in the same file as being questioned as well, resulting in another 244 properties, which were the same properties. So this duplicated the list showing 488 properties that were reported as not being taxed. Actually, there were 238 properties of the 244 properties. They were all taxed, and six are taxes exempt. So this is, this is what the spreadsheet that I got that looked like, and you can see the same, the account numbers are highlighted, and here's the other one, the same account numbers are highlighted. So that's how the 500 untaxed parcels were, came into being. There were no untaxed parcels. And this is, this is our legacy system. This is what we've been dealing with for many, many years. And we band-aided and made it work, and during the last 2015 reassessment, the contractor could see how the account number 4305 has a 01 and a 002, and it shows their, so it's actually two cards filled under the same account. And this was a very common practice in years gone past, and, you know, as we go forward, the new systems, whenever, whenever these come up, for some reason, there might be changing acreage or selling, we try to break them up when we can. But sometimes the taxpayers adamant they want, still receive one tax bill. So you see with Mr. Elliott, he had 7.01 acres on parcel one of 4305 and 10.23 acres on 002 of that same account number. So this is the appraisal side, the VAI appraisal. This is where the assessments are done. So this is the appraisal side, the VAI appraisal. This is where the assessments are done. Yes.
Not trying to interrupt you, but why are we bundled and unbundled? It seems to me that's where the issue is coming from with a lot of these matters. Including Mr. Raymond that paid for eighteen years over tax.
It, it's not something we do anymore, as I said. It is, it was a practice that, that was gone a long time ago. And it's just taking time to get these parcels unbundled. And there was, there was a push during the last reassessment and that's how we got that O O one and O O two. Because ideally you want the, the tax maps to match up easily to the tax records. But because of this, this bundling and a lot of times like the lots in town, it's Miss Raymond's with the perfect instance. You have smaller lots and people buy three lots and they put one house across all three lots. So are you going to bill them for a house on this one, or a house on this one, or this part of the house? And this one, it becomes great, they just want one bill. And
Well, we need it all together.
Right.
Because I had that situation.
It can be.
I mean, we need to get it for you. It's a lot of confusion and we have to
Since we're asking, since we're asking questions all the same time, hopefully wait very much. But I'm very familiar with, with the bundled parcels. Here, I've, I've got two parcels of nine five parcels of a bundle.
Right.
And I always, I always pay taxes. You brought something to light tonight that is pretty shocking. So Mr. Chastain, Brightminds co-founder, he was actually working with Womplin and Means in the last reassessment. And this, unless this, Mr. Womplin is misrepresenting himself, he was responsible for all of the bundling and unbundling, surfing, all said, correct?
Stuart, he guaranteed that, I said, with that name work. That's the first thing that hit my mind, I was already
So, so what do you mean?
Well, he, he guaranteed it works if Chastain did.
Maybe he did, but, but he had no way of knowing probably what was more
I think what he said, that's a lot.
He guaranteed. He said, it's unfortunate that you and your work have been denigrated by others. And he goes on to say, see, Chastain worked for Womplin and Means and was responsible for residential, commercial and reviewing during the two thousand and fifteen reassessment.
And he guaranteed it worked, which he says, but anyway, I don't want to hold this up for them.
Right.
You got to keep that going on.
She's supposed to only talk for fifteen minutes, I'm sorry.
The reassessment company is responsible for their work. They, they, they certified at the end, they sign a book, a copy goes to the circuit court, sign, copy. A copy comes to my office. I haven't received that yet, but I'll do it and he's finished.
Well, no more questions.
We could ask more questions.
No more questions. Let Sally finish her report and then we'll move on.
Okay. So here is, again, Mr. Elliott's property. And this is the real estate maintenance side, which is the billing side. And it shows that he was billed for the seventeen point two-four acres. His land value was ninety-three thousand four hundred, which was all of those, the twenty, he had a two-house license charged for, for the two lots, twenty-eight thousand. And there was a residual twenty-one oh thirty-five, another twenty-eight thousand, sixteen thousand something down there, I can't see. But anyway, he did pay on both of those lots. It was just the acreage to bundle together. And that's the way we had to do it with the system. And then again, this is another example, Octaria Corporation that has two parcels that were bundled together. All the acreage was built, the real estate master maintenance is up on the top right-hand corner. And it shows hundred and eighty-four point four-nine acres built. This parcel is in the land use program, so they were paying at the land use rate on this parcel. Here's another one. This is Catherine Stanley's property. And there are three parcels bundled onto this one. And so they total up to forty-seven three one. And then on the right-hand side, see the real estate master maintenance. The total value of the land is one oh eight four hundred. The total land use value is twenty-nine thousand. There's no improvements on this parcel. They were billed the land use rate. They are not required to pay a one-acre house right here. There's no building on the property. I heard that mentioned earlier and this is, this is an example of that. So she was billed for forty-seven point four, forty-one acres at the forestry land use rate from the two thousand and fifteen reassessment at six hundred and twelve dollars per acre. So that's the twenty-nine thousand that she made taxes on. I just did a little timeline and I'll go through this briefly about the events that led up to the defunding of the position in my office. I know you see it hard, so. I guess the whole thing started back in April of two thousand and seventeen. And we tried to hire an in-house assessor for at least a year. And I went to the interviews for that and it was a good idea. We couldn't find anybody to fill the position. It just, we kept looking and looking. We, we were going to hire a guy and then he got a better offer. And anyway, that just didn't work out. But it's, it's, it's something that we talked about for a long time. This is more about the RFP process. And we, we delayed the, the reassessment for up to two years in October of two thousand and seventeen. So this is why our two thousand and fifteen values are getting to be a pretty low place right now. But we were still trying to hire an assessor and we had hopes of doing that and it, it just, we could not get it to work. So then, two thousand and nineteen, we put the bid out again. And there is, the, the contract was awarded, but I couldn't find anything in the minutes from October of eighteen to April of two thousand and nineteen that said that the board approved this, this contract. These, these, there, this is just our procurement policy. The Kingland County procurement policy says that there should be board approval on, on fitted contracts over a hundred thousand. These procedures are usually put in place so there's transparency in government. And that's where our procurement policy is on the transparency portal on our Kingland County website. Again, this is going, oh. It's kind of important about this, I think this is kind of where, this, where this reassessment was different. When the deputy from my office went to work as, as the county administrator's assistant, she took on more of a role, she was managing the reassessment. And, and she took on more of a role than that. And she had a lot of knowledge about the reassessment process. So I was not nearly as involved in this project as I had been in past reassessments. I've been through probably seven reassessments in the time I've been with the county. And although we communicated a great deal with the county administrator's assistant and we were able to exchange information that way. But this, this was a little different, but it, it worked well. Then we went through so there was this, the sales study was presented in April of nineteen going along through the reassessment. This is the longest reassessment that I've ever been through. It started in, in two thousand and nineteen and, and you know, full two years. So the whole time, they, the reassessment starts with our file. And so our file goes over to them. We don't touch it once they get that file. They're doing their work in that file. That's where they do all of their tables and their studies. We don't go into their file. That would be interfering with their work. That file is their file, not our file. They start with our file, but then that file is manipulated throughout the course of the reassessment. Well, two years is a long time for the data to be out there. Because when it comes back in, it overwrites all of our files. So my concern was making sure that the final reassessment was updated with all the deeds and wills and plaques and new parcels and everything that we have to do along, along the time the trust changes. There's a lot of work that has to be done. My concern was making sure that, that Brightminds file was updated and so everybody gets their real estate notice. Because if they don't get their notice, you know, they don't have the opportunity to come in and eat with the, the board equalization and the assessor to talk about their assessed properties. And I did make sure that happened. And also during this course of time, the, the county signed another contract with visions. And I didn't see that in the report either. Where that was approved by the board supervisors. But maybe, maybe it wasn't there, I don't know. So yes, on July thirtieth, I updated his file for all the address changes and new parts. That's the only time I, I would ever, I don't, I don't adjust his values at all. I only change names, addresses, give him the new parcel information so he can assess those. But we don't make any changes in the assessor's file. And so from here on out, we kind of know what happened, what went downhill. I think that when the, the deputy or the assistant went on maternity leave, kind of our chain of communication ended. We didn't know a lot of things at that point. So I think that's where our communication breakdown started in this whole chain of events. Here, I just have a little spreadsheet that shows how much we assess the new construction over the past, last reassessment. Also, it shows the annual cost of an assessor's office at a minimum. And the last column shows the reassessment cost for this past reassessment was a hundred and fifty-six thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars. So, you know, if we're going to have an in-house reassessment, I would think we'd need to do it on a more frequent basis than every four years. That's just my suggestion. Because it, it just won't pay for itself. I mean, one reassessment is like one year of an assessor's office. There's been a lot of talk about our abatements that we do in the commissioner of the revenue office. Abatements are not always errors. A lot of times the taxpayer doesn't make the change DMV on time. We have to remove a decal or if someone calls us for veteran relief. There's lots of reasons. Or we have to put a business license assessment in as a place marker. Then we'll have to remove it when we get the actual numbers. There's a lot of reasons for abatements. And I pulled these numbers off of the compensation board website and compared some locales around us. I also showed you the number of employees for Kingland County, New Kent and Middlesex. Because we all have similar duties. And these are just their compensation board approved personnel. But they have four in New Kent and Middlesex as, and Kingland has four that are approved. New Kent actually has nine employees, Middlesex has five. Middlesex is a little bit smaller than us in population. New Kent's a little bit larger. So you see our RE abatements compared to New Kent and Middlesex, they're a lot lower. Business license abatements, they're, you know, all pretty much in line. Personal property abatements, business personal property abatements. They're all pretty much in line with the other localities. It's, it's, the state department taxation gives us the abatement form. It's just the way we have to do business because of the code sections that we are under. It's not that we're losing revenue or making lots of errors. It's, it's pretty much how we have to do things. So I had requested from you guys earlier this month, memorandum of understanding with real estate duties going out of our office. I wanted to know what that meant. Because we don't just do new construction assessments. And the workload for new construction assessments only equates to about a week and a half, a month of the time that we spend on real estate. And the only thing that I've heard back so far is that we will not be doing with new construction assessments. So we, we, we gave our estimated hours, like, total amount throughout the year. Because there are obviously highs and lows and so we had to average those out throughout the year for these different job duties that we have with commissioner revenues office. And so, and, and I didn't even include the conversion time that we're going to have in the next year for the two new systems. That's going to take a lot of time. But, so before taking away new construction duties, we have sixteen, six hundred and sixty-six hours of work month. After taking away the new construction duties of fifty-six hours a month roughly, we're, we still have six hundred and eleven hours of, of duties that we need to perform every month. And again, I'll remind you, I asked for a position this past year during budget time. Because we really need one. The county is growing and we are experiencing growing pains trying to keep up. When taking away this, this new construction duty, fifty-six hours, we're still going to need additional hours to provide the documentation to whoever's going to be entering that stuff in visions, because we're going to be locked out of visions. The new software, is my understanding. So we still are going to need about six hundred and twenty-seven hours a month of employee time. And right now, with the four of us working and working pre-lunch, we have about, we have five hundred and sixty hours. If there's no holidays or any of that, we have five hundred and sixty hours. You take one employee away, a hundred and forty hours, and we only have four hundred and twenty hours a month to get the job done. So you're setting us up for failure here. I mean, we, we brought you the revenue that you need every year to meet your budget and make your bond ratings. And, and we want to continue to offer the service that we have to the citizens of Kingland County. And so it'd be very difficult. If one person's sick, I mean, I don't know, days, we're not going to be able to keep the doors open. It's just going to be impossible. And, and nobody in the state our size has less than four people. Most people have quite a few more deputies in their offices if you survey some of the surrounding areas. We've already talked about the hiring decision for the new reassessor. And there's Mr. Wong's letter. So I know you're sitting here for me. Open to take in any questions. Oh, I just did want to point out one thing on the art report. I know you're going to be discussing that earlier, I mean, later on. But the first finding that the auditor had was, was about sending out personal property notices. And I just wanted to let you know that the borders of supervisors for Kingland County adopted auto by exception, which is allowed in fifty-eight point one dash thirty-five eighteen point one of the code of Virginia. bottom line exception, which is allowed in fifty-eight point one dash thirty-five eighteen point one of the code of Virginia. And this county ordinance, section seventy dash one forty-five, was adopted on eleven twenty of two thousand and six, which says that instead of sending out a um, personal property declaration form to every taxpayer, that we are supposed to rely on the D and B records and the GMM officials' records for vehicles and boats. And that um, we do send out the, the returns to the businesses to report their personal property or business taxation. Um, there were some other findings in there about sending up the general ledger. Well, the finance department does that. I mean, there's just, I put it in your packet, some of the comments that I had about that. I know I've gone over my time, but I would like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to um, talk to you about these issues. I welcome the opportunity to have it seen at the table in the future to correct these issues with the conversion processes so that we all work to best serve the residents of King William County, our bosses. And I thank you for your time and I thank you for your opportunity to clarify the misinformation that has been publicly disseminated.
I think so.
But I would like to say that this process that you undertaken has been extremely difficult for me and my family. And I'll tell you why. My daughter called me last Friday. She listened to me and told me, I understand that you're getting money from your father because you're taking money. And whether you did it intentionally or not, you hurt a lot of people. I think that the release of this preliminary audit was extremely unprofessional. Extremely unprofessional. I called the auditor and he did it. And I told him, I said, man, you know, I really don't have any problems with you down in there. And she said, yeah, it's unfortunate that this thing had to happen. It's kind of amazing to me that you could release this preliminary audit before it was over, the preliminary audit called. Yet, the final audit, there's no way this should be seen on the internet. It's kind of amazing that how that works. I'm gonna do a couple of things that, and I really, I've, I've, I've looked at the final audit. And I really don't have any time to look. There are a few things I need to talk to the auditor and you'll be able to explain how to define. I would think they understand a couple of things. One thing, they asked for the finance department to review my reconciliation. What I was doing happened until about three, four years ago, when they stopped asking for it. So I stopped giving them. That was, that was not a problem. Everyone was in my office, involved, anybody could come look at it. So why transfer? I think I made a big deal out of that. We had two last year. Man, finance gives us a report, says we need to wire money somewhere. Somebody in my office calls and says, it's a done event. Used to require two people, still do, we require two people to approve. Somebody else inputs. Can do a whole lot more than that, but we'll do about a job document. I think what really caused a bigger problem to my employees than anything was the talk of they aborted transactions. They felt like that they were being accused of taking money. I believe you directly out of the newspaper that came out. According to the testimony, someone were to pay their back their taxes in cash and employed a void transaction in the system and take the money, but no trace of it happened. I'll tell you why this is wrong. We had to provide the copy of every void produced by the computer system to Robinson Palmer Cox. And how you can say that there'd be no trace of it? It's pretty, it's, it's puzzled me. Now, I don't know if this was a problem with the people here or the newspaper, but that's just wrong. Mostly what I have a problem with is what's been written in the newspaper and it's completely wrong. One of the counties, all treasurer employees have cash checks that are only allowed to be cashed by the treasurer. We have not cashed a check in my office. I don't know how I can cash a check. I can't take the King William County check, go to the bank cash. But we have never cashed a check in my office. We have employees ask us when I first got here. Hey, have we cashed twenty-nine hundred checks? I said, we don't do it. Where that came from, it's not even in the preliminary of, uh, thank Robinson Palmer Cox order thing. Somebody made that up. And who told them? Who made it up? I don't know. But that is just, people are lying. Another thing, all treasurer, the treasurer conducts all county business from his personal fund. In the preliminary audit, it was said, I possibly did something. I don't know where that came from. Is it possible? The newspaper writes, the treasurer conducts all county business from his personal fund. There has never been a time I did any transactions with my personal fund. Not from banking transactions. I've had a call, Steve, you called me. But it's not doing banking transactions. That's just a flat-out lie. It also discussed about bookkeeping is essential and treasury handles all finances and the books are not being properly named things. Easy for the cabinet revenue business. There's never been a thing anywhere in this report, any reports I would, man, you just read a thing. City self, all right? And why isn't written that, that revenue might go missing? Yeah, I'm telling, I think this is pretty personal. Also, it says, well, when the preliminary part, this is read from the county overview. But when the preliminary audit came back detailing about tenant accounts opened, ordered from banks, raised red flags. There's nothing mentioned in that audit about any kind of red flag. And yeah, we do have about tenant accounts. We got two for school. That's on school account, cash register account. We got a account, we got a account, they collect money. It seems as if we got an EMS account, a care account. They don't ask to be owed about time names. Then I have three operating account, investment account, and a money box account. And it mentions here, on any given day, we transferred money back and forth from a cash checking into the two investment accounts in order to get higher interest rates. I think higher interest rate is not a good idea. According to the preliminary rate for audit, doing this with several accounts and several banks could lead to errors, especially when handled through which's personal cell. Was it not handled through a personal cell? They only made one transfer a month to cover the school payroll and expenses. I think teachers like to get paid, but we send them money. Man, the investment accounts we're talking about, they're talking about multiple transfers. That's a sweeper account. The bank makes every one of those transfers automatically. Yeah, we get twenty or twenty-two, how many working days too much we've got? The bank does every one of them. I don't do any. Man, if that's a problem with people that don't understand the banking, I'm sorry. And I'm sorry I tried to get more interest for this county. I probably ought to just stuck it in the checking account and to the L with it and leave that in. There's some other things in here that kind of upset me, but uh, I'm gonna let it go. I'm gonna be gone Thursday and I'll be glad to be gone. Thanks.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, I don't think Mr. Wood's entirely, entirely wrong, and that is up, to be, to be quite honest. Um, I'll say that we all sat here and listened to the report that was given to us on the preliminary audit findings. And uh, I don't recall, as I've ever been referring, that there was any type of uh, theft or fraud or anything like that, but identified and went through some procedural things that we needed to fix. Um, I think that the title of the review took a report and carried everything to its logical extreme in an attempt to make everybody look very bad. No one ever reached out to me from India to see if I had any thoughts on it. The quotes from this testimony are some kind of hodgepodge from what she said at that meeting, but not direct quotes. Um, so I think we, we, we know we've gotten some issues. Okay, we know we've got some issues to work through. And what we were trying to do is identify issues and work through them. Uh, I think, I think the paper has done us all the greatest service by taking this to an area that it was never supposed to go. No area that we ever were accusing anybody of going with. Um, and so I'm very disappointed in that. And I'm very disappointed with what that's done to these constitutional officers. Because whatever, again, issues we might have with some performances in the office, these have been dedicated to public service and it didn't deserve to be treated that, that, like, that, that an opportunity for rebuttal. Um, so I, I truly do not think our staff uh, i- i- is out there trying to besmirch these people. I think the paper got a hold of something and turned it into something that it never was. So um, I apologize that it's come to this. I think we still have some things to work through. It's gonna take us working together to get it done, and I hope we can do that. So that's at least my viewpoint on this. Um, I know I don't speak for the whole of the board, but well, I like to say something.
What, what is happening? We're going, so who is at fault? No one is ever questioned Harris integrity or Soundly's integrity, period. But now they've been tried in court, public opinion. They've been accused of everything. They should be in jail, really, if you, if you listen to all of it. And we probably have a small part in it because we acted on a preliminary audit. We have not gotten the fine, which we're gonna discuss.
Sure, but even that preliminary audit was given, that was just, just on a factual basis? It's just, this is, this is some of the, well, the initial.
It was something said in the last meeting of the audit, camp denied access to the accounts. You know, he didn't have to allow the audit, yeah, results. You know, it's, it's safe, it's really safe. You know, Harris, the only problem I had with the treasurer's office was the sale of the Lincoln tax properties. And Harris, you and I have talked about it many times, so. His integrity.
Can I say one thing?
Yeah.
The previous attorney I had has been dismissed, required a new one. And Marie has already met with him. The process is starting.
Well, Harris, you know, I have apologized to you several times. I'm sorry that it's happened. You've been a lifelong friend. And setting up you, doing what we did in the last meeting was a hard thing to do. But, you know, I just, I just hope we can, you know, continue to be friends.
Harry, we're going forward with, with the request or with Lincoln taxes, correct? That would be saying that.
We've already talked to another law firm, it's started processes thing.
Thank you. Hope you enjoy your retirement.
Glad to be gone.
I look forward to seeing you next time. Thank you for your many years of service.
Next item on the agenda, the justice whole business ten, a public hearing in consideration of ordinance nine dash two zero to adopt a four-year time schedule for reassessment. This is the testimony communicated by the minister. Do you take it or not?
Gentlemen, what you have in front of you is a request to reevaluate and reset the annual reassessment. As you're aware, board supervisors adopted ordinance twenty-one that said to continue extending the reassessment from four years to six years, which is February twenty-twenty-one. I had published the notice for a four-year term in the interim. The board had discussed and agreed to us bring on a contract and tax assessment. And with that, the board then now has an option to do a biannual assessment. So I am, what you have in front of you is actually going to be a ordinance change for a four-year, but it will begin to be, of course, in terms of determining if they want to go for a two-year stay.
Well, now that we have an assessor's office, I think the desire could always been to go to a two-year, once we achieve.
I agree with that. So.
Should we change it to nine dash twenty R, change it to two? It looks like. Right, okay, right. Do we need to hear this if we're gonna strike it and readvertise? Oh, I don't think we need to readvertise to a two-year term.
Well, you will have to readvertise it. And so it's really in the discretion of the board whether you open it or not. At this point, you're not gonna adopt it, so there's no legal requirement for the public hearing.
We'll readvertise in the whole public hearing in two years, yes. Unless you wanna see if there's anybody here that wants to, to come with a desire to speak on it and come out. That's true, it could be here. If they made it all the way up here, I'd say this long. I think it's a. That's true. But we'll have to do that. Let's just open it real quick and just to see if people would like to still speak forward to, that we will know what the plan on just doing for reassessors, re-advertize for two, but should we open it? Yeah, open the public hearing, just to see if anybody wants to say their thing. They were not trying before.
I'll be very quick, our couch, metric five. Yes, sir. It's not frequency, it's accuracy, that we're talking about.
Yes, sir. And then we'll close it and we'll readvertise for two years. Okay, next item on the agenda, ten B, public hearing in consideration of ordinance ten dash two zero to amend the continuity of government ordinance, this testimony.
Gentlemen, what you have in front of you is ordinance ten dash twenty. It is to amend the continuity of government ordinance. The county attorney is recommending the continuity of government ordinance amended to refer to the immediate emergency as ongoing and amended to clear that the continuity of government ordinance shall remain in effect until the sooner of the date, six months after the state emergency declarations lifted by the governor or the county administrator, the local declaration of emergency is lifted or revoked. So I'm asking the board to consider adopting ordinance ten dash twenty.
Discussion in the sense now before it has been coming here.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
One, one thing, of course, the board could always amend this and, and end it early. I mean, there's no reason why this board couldn't take action to terminate this ordinance early, give the condition of warning.
Okay, thanks so much. And I'll now open the hearing for consideration of ordinance ten dash twenty. Anybody that's wishing to speak, three minutes for individuals, five minutes for groups. State your name and your address. Only everybody, not up here at once. Everybody asleep. Okay, it looks like no one wants to go. Close the public hearing. Do I have a motion? I'll make a motion that we approved ordinance ten days. Second, a motion made and properly seconded, is there any discussion on the matter? Being done, Ms. Lawrence, who's called up?
Mr. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, we have the final AUP report, treasurer's office and the commissioner revenues office processes as performed by Robinson Palmer Cox Association, LLC, AUP. Speaking with Natasha Jolene, Director of Financial Services.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, we would like to present to the board supervisors the final report from the agreed upon procedures performance audit performed on the treasurer's and commissioner's office by Robinson Palmer Cox Association. We received the final report this afternoon. The report is included in tonight's packet and on the line. The audit was to focus on process, procedures, knowledge level, and training needs of staff. The agreed upon procedures engaged reviews performed in accordance with standards established by the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants. In the treasurer's office, procedures performed to gather information consisted of reviewing all written and unwritten policies and procedures, interview of all employees excluding the treasurer as to job responsibilities, extended cross-training and segregation of duties. as to job responsibilities, extended cross-training and segregation of duties. The commissioner of revenue declined to participate in the process and the employees in the commissioner's office were not here. RFC interviewed the current special project assistant in the Kingway County Finance Department, who is a former deputy commissioner of revenue in the commissioner's office, as to her knowledge of the operations of the commissioner's office. Observations and recommendations from RFC for the treasurer's office include bank reconciliation concerns. Currently, there is no formal review and approval process for bank reconciliations. The treasurer performs a consolidated reconciliation of three different bank accounts together prepared manually on ring, bar, paper, and pencil. Best practices advise bank reconciliations be reviewed by an individual independent of the cash receipt and dispersment options. Additionally, it is recommended that all bank accounts be reconciled on an individual basis to create a better audit trail and less cumbersome reconciliation. Consideration should be given to automating the bank reconciliation process as well. When testing approval and documentation for wire transfers, it was noted that wire transfers can be initiated, approved, and posted by one individual. There's a lack of adequate support documentation on hand to support the transfers tested. Best practices advise that a dual process be established when one individual in the treasurer's office initiates a wire transfer in the banking system and another individual approves, posts the transaction in the accounting system. Adequate supporting documentation indicated the amount, adequate supporting documentation indicating the amount, date, and purpose of the wire transfer should be retained on file to document the transaction. There are several concerns regarding segregation of duties in the treasurer's office. During the review of procedures, RFC notes that all staff in the treasurer's office can void revenue transactions and also remove penalties and interest from tax accounts in the accounting system. Best practices advise that only the treasurer and chief deputy treasurer have authorization to complete these transactions. Single signature checks can be issued by three of the four employees in the treasurer's office on the TNF bank account and by all four employees on the Soma bank account. Best practices advise that only the treasurer and chief deputy have authorization to issue single signature checks. Observations and recommendations from RFC for the commissioner's office include item one, personal property tax returns. It was revealed that annual personal property filings are not sent to taxpayers for filing as required by state code. By code of Virginia, it is required every taxpayer owning personal property on January 1st of each year to file an annual personal property return with the commissioner. This is typically accomplished by the local commissioner sending out a personal property return to taxpayers to confirm that personal property on file is still taxable. Best practices advise the commissioner establish a process requiring citizens of the county to review their personal property tax returns annually and confirm any changes directly to the commissioner as required by state code. The treaty would reduce the number of abatement costs by the commissioner's office due to incorrect billing to citizens. Item two, meal tax ordinance compliance. County meal tax ordinance states that remitters of meals tax shall make out or report upon such form and submitting forth such information as the commissioner of revenue may prescribe and require, showing the amount of food charges collected and the tax required to be collected, and shall sign and deliver each such report to the treasurer with remittance of such tax. Currently, remittances are received mail directly to the commissioner's office and the payment is remitted to the treasurer. During review of meals tax, it was also noted that penalties were not charged on late remittance. According to county ordinance, payments not remitted shall receive additional penalty fees and by the county treasurer. Best practices advise meals tax returns and payments be mailed directly to the treasurer as prescribed by the county ordinance. It is also recommended the penalties be assessed in meals tax received after the 20th of the month as prescribed by the county ordinance. Item three, business license tax payments. During review of business license tax payments, it was noted that times interest is not being assessed on the one quick business license payments. According to county ordinance, interest shall be charged on the late payment of the tax from due date until the date paid. Best practices advise that the commissioner's office assess interest and penalties on a consistent basis when payments are received after 30 days from due date of the tax and penalties be classified and reported on a separate line in the accounting system so they are accurately reported. Item four, revenue received by the commissioner's office. Certain revenues to include meals, business license, consumer utility, and bank franchise tax revenue from taxpayers are received by mail or in person in the commissioner's office. These funds are walked over to the treasurer's office when received. The custody of the fund is not established until the funds are given to the treasurer's office. Best practices advise that all collections and receipts of funds be handled directly by the treasurer's office. The final item from the commissioner's office is assessing of new construction and improvements. Twenty-five new construction improvements over the last five years within the county and the town of West Point were tested to ensure that new construction improvements have been added to the tax rolls. Four exceptions in the sampling of billion improvements had not been added to the tax rolls. Best practices advise that the commissioner establish an approved procedure to identify and assess new construction and improvements within the town and county. There needs to be improved processes of follow-up and reconciliation to ensure that all new construction and improvements are properly assessed on a current basis. At this time, I would like to address the board and thank you for the opportunity to allow RFC to perform the AUP. I am hopeful that the observations and recommendations presented will result in better procedures and policies for collecting of revenues for the county. The needs of the county to provide services to our citizens continues to grow. We anticipate that if we could improve collections of revenues too, this would assist with offsetting rising costs. Thank you.
Yeah, well, the initial preliminary exit audit that we had, I think it was seventeen items dedicated to the treasurer's office. So now it looks like it's a, one of them is security, that's not one of the treasurer's office, that one thing. Segregation of duties, you know, they are saying that too many people are doing too many things in the treasurer's office. Well, when you get to the very last page, recommendations, observations and recommendations and jump. We recommend that the treasurer and commissioner of revenue consider cross-training staff for all financial processes. It can't be both ways. I mean, you're saying, basically, we have segregation of duties, because too many people have access to, what, just about everything? So that's another, that's four right there of the remaining seven. So if they want people to be cross-trained in all financial processes, I don't know what that means.
And you notice they're saying that there are several processes for which only one employee is trained in the office. They're not, the items that they specifically address where it should only be the treasurer or the chief deputy or, those are specific to items that there should not be cross-training.
But in the treasurer section of this, they're saying that too many people have access to the money, say. I don't know, it's like four of them. So are they saying that these items in the treasurer's section, that segregation of duties means too many people have access to?
Yes, too many people do have access to employees. That is what they were saying. And when they, during the exit interview, they did talk to us about that. And none of this is at all saying that we have staff going on or anything. All of these things are to protect the staff of the treasurer's office.
It's just confusing when you read this general recommendation at the end of the thing, when they say, we recommend the county treasurer and commissioner of revenue consider cross-training staff for all financial processes. These are, in my opinion, financial processes in the first part of this report in the treasurer's office, correct?
Not considering transfer, wire transfers, they're not, the auditors are not saying that all of his staff should be able to transfer a wire or know how to transfer funds from banks to banks.
Just say, would you, you could be trained to do the operation without having the access to do this.
And I would say, in my department, I'll just use my department for example, if someone walks into the finance office, there's certain things I expect my staff to be able to help somewhat. If they asked about their payroll and Nita wasn't there, I would expect my staff to be able to say, I'm not sure what to do, but let me see if there's something I can help you with. Come to me, they would come to me and find out, okay, Natasha, you have the access that Nita has, can you pull this person's payroll, their tax report, or whatever? And that's what I think they're talking about, is more frustrating within.
The other thing, I was hoping that maybe they had amended this, something in it about the, it's the scopes, what was mentioned in your statement, that the treasurer's office had overappropriated funds. So where did that come from? That's the first I've heard of that.
That was not something the auditors found, that was something I found once I got access to the main statements.
We announced that to the world tonight, has it been verified?
Yes, it is verified. Mr. Wood actually has replied to the email and said that's exactly what he does.
Yeah, that's just, that's just, it probably shouldn't have been.
We need to be more transparent with everything the county does. We haven't been transparent enough over the years. That did need to be looked into a little more, too.
We actually are waiting for the auditors to kind of help us out with that, yes.
It would have been nice if that had been shared prior to meeting with everybody. Did y'all guys know that, with me? You read it from, oh, did you? I'm out of the loop.
Thank you, Natasha.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda is update on revision of planning ordinance assistance. Sheriff Graham, acting director of planning.
So, everyone?
Good evening.
I want to just give you a update on the draft scheduling sub-divisional items. There has been a few changes, so we just want to bring everybody up to date. The planning commission will have the regular meeting on October 6th, and that meeting, the Berkeley group will be there, they're going to go over the process, schedule, review of the recent changes, and go over the next steps that will be coming up. On November 16th, we're going to have a joint work session, the planning and board supervisors. The Berkeley group will be there also. They're going to review the proposed amendments, the ordinance updates. They're going to discuss some of the broad issues that have come up. They're going to go over the questions that are going to be addressed at stakeholders, interviews, and the public forums. January, they're planning to hold local forums and for stakeholder interviews. And hopefully we can hold them in each of the districts. We will also have some staff work sessions in between the joint work sessions to go over this. Prior to the January public forums and stakeholders, we are going to do our best to send mailings out to everybody, get it in the paper, we are going to have it on the webpage, we'll do everything we can so everybody is notified of our meetings. And we will keep them updated on our webpage of our changes in ordinance, so they can know they're at any time, they can come to our office at any time, keep everybody on top of it. There should be two more joint work sessions with you and the planning commission that should be held in February, April, and May, the Berkeley group will hold another open house for the public in that be prior to the public hearings. Hopefully on schedule, August will be the public hearing for the planning commissions to review our draft ordinance, and then your public hearing will be in September, about a year out.
So Sharon, how would you describe, are we starting over?
We're not starting.
Flushing and starting over, are we?
We're not starting over, but we are taking it. We're listening to what everybody's saying. We've got the Berkeley group that's going to be there kind of navigating the meetings.
More involved.
More involved, yeah. So there will be some changes, but it's not going to be a complete redo of all the work this time.
Well, yeah, I know we've gotten some feedback so far, some things that people like, some things that people don't like, so, yeah, we're continuing the process and getting more info so we can have best possible.
And we welcome, because they're at any time, they can call, they can email, anybody who wants to prepare short.
I said it'll all be on the web, so.
It will be. And any feedback that we get, we will make sure that the planning commission and you can have these.
So transparent, visible to the public as much as possible.
Yes.
Next item we have on the agenda is update on fire and emergency medical services program. Chief, please. Eric, how you doing? I want to give you a rundown real quick on staffing. Been a couple months, we've had eight days with two people on staff, just not being able to fill it holes with the part time, but we've hired most of our full-time slots. We've got one open and just the onboarding process, get those guys up and going, it's slow. Considering implementing minimum hour requirements, which is something we're trying to avoid for a part-timer to make it more inviting for the computer, more part-time versus other departments, but because we're having really difficult time getting in there, we're considered a minimal requirement for them, which may limit our flow a little bit from there. Our captain will be on October the 1st, which will provide our consistent supervision in our hospital, which should approach a 300 service level a little bit more. We currently are seven out of eight full-time positions in the firehouse, one paramedic, 27 part-time employees, 13 are AOs, and we're continuing to interview for the position to fill that fast with the spot. Our apparatus are doing fairly well, my thirteen is in service for extreme needs only due to its continually declined mechanical reliability. Brush, the brush truck is out of service, it's got a fuel leak coming out pretty bad this week. The station one update, our internet service, which is, which functions extremely well, it's being shared through 360 complex and shares off the sideline across the street, so it's got a good service coming in, so we can share it from three different departments. Station one, it still remains close to the public at this time to the mental, because of the current virus. Fire prevention week is the 4th to the 10th of October, keeping up with the work in the community, try to get some service stuff out there while we're mainly looking at state. Our equipment, we still have adequate PD supplies, however, the N95 masks that we are fit tested for are not available, we have multiple different orders out there, it's just one of those things that we're going through. The N95s are not suggested as often as what they were in the beginning, we do mostly surgical masks now, so that it's not a fear that we have a run out of equipment. We have one life pack, which is a cranium, which is out of service, it's a 2007, split with the rep from, is it, I'm sorry, striker who oversees that side of the house, and it may not be repairable, so we'd like to see this extremely expensive piece of equipment. Providing excess, I mean, not excess, but extra uniforms supplies for using the care company, so we have activities in the firehouses, people with high-risk patients, they can immediately shallow, get right back to service regardless of whether or not they have extra uniform at the station. All the other things that we have going on are pretty much the same as what they were last month. The staffing modes have affected us and our responses, especially when we have multiple calls or high level of need for equipment, people. All the volunteer organizations that helped out, I'd like to say thank you again to this past one, if that may, at West Point, Ed Warrenton, all helping us with, I think, it was three helicopters, I requested two. I think it was three helicopters, I requested tour for the King Lady side, and I think West Point actually used two helicopters. We did have one call where we had, and they got some interest from the public, but they had a Henry County Fire Institute, and they were trying to call in front of M and M Pizza, or it was an overturned vehicle, our units were all out, and they were off there at the hospital, so we had to call them mutually for that. Appreciate those guys coming out to help us out with that. Once you guys have any questions, that's all of that. Now, we just continue to try to shake the question and get some staffing. Yeah, and then thank goodness, the, the Henry did come out, I mean, I saw where there, there was a kind of criticize that effort, but I think there were some, well, four members of the public that did step in and pointed out what exactly the situation was, not whether people wanted to hear that or not, that's up to them. But we know, we know you guys are doing as much as you can with what you have come up. You know, like I said before, just continue to tell us what you need, and we'll do everything we can to get to, to advance the mission.
You're on Facebook.
I don't, I don't look at Facebook, I don't look at the special pages, I have my personal and I, it's all fake.
I'm glad the equipment that you said was out of, really, right, broken, repair code, we use any kind of care system for that, it does not relate at all.
The ambulance?
Not an ambulance, the other.
Oh, the A, yeah, the A thing.
Oh, I don't, I don't think so.
Because that's a very good idea.
Just something that's not almost my, not using it.
That's true. Chief, one other thing, we thank you for those, every month, we see the extended shift hours, we appreciate it.
Next item we have on the agenda, new business, the A designated board member to vote at Baker Conference Resolution 20/54, Ms. Tastner.
Yes, sir. Gentlemen, our namesake of the Baker by law states that each county shall designate a representative of its board supervisors to cast its vote at any of the business meetings. What you have in front of you is a resolution identifying who you are going to recommend to be able to have that authority, and if you would like, they are asking for concultments as well this year.
Well, I think I'm registered, I don't know how much I'll be able to attend, I know these two.
It's all virtual.
Yeah.
Yeah, hopefully, we still going to try to set something up here.
So, I think it was the three of us that had registered, but again, I, I need to be judicious with my time, since it's virtual, I'll probably.
Well, let's, let's not.
That's why I was thinking Ed, and then you as the alternate, and us, it's the only death together. I will endeavor to be on the, on the line as it were.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Ed, as the primary and the spirit.
It's the second, it's the second.
Okay. Okay, motion made, five seconds, then we can move to the sessions. Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Skowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye. Next item we have, the Resolution 20/55, acceptance of gift from Upper Matapan Indian Tribe.
Yes, sir. I was contacted by Steve Tuppence, who is a part of the Upper Matapan Indian Tribe, and the medical building, oh, thanks, Steve.
I'm busy, I'm like.
The medical building that is next to the 360 complex was purchased by the tribe, and they are wanting to donate to us, developing and repaving of the area in blue, which is between those buildings, and it would be a donation or gift to the county. Instead of just coming in and doing half of the parking lot, they would like to do it all, and it's to the very back of our building, and then the yellow section is areas that we will be coming to the board in the next 12 months and asking to do some additional paving. And at that point, it may benefit the tribe if we do some additional paving, in the backyard area, but that will be determined at the time. So Resolution 20/55 is requesting that you preciously accept the pre-milling and paving at the complex in its desperate need and other signs.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 20/55, and I'll second with regards to.
Thank you very much.
It's 54, clarification, not 55.
Oh, 50.
That's it. Okay, but since 2054.
I've got 54.
Those people are making it about, again, since.
Well, I'm always.
That's the Baker.
No matter what, I'm always wrong.
I don't know.
So it is 20.
It's 55. We're good. We're good. Yep, okay, motion made. Seconded, and I don't guess it's in the discussion, nobody's not for it, are they? This is.
Mr. Skowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye. Thank them very much. I present, oh, thank you, Steve, let them know, we're very appreciative up there. So, next. Okay, next on the, 12, administrative matters from our county administrators, Tastner.
The only information in this section is your standard reports, but there is a letter in there, probably on board dequalification. I had made you aware that we are going to need applicants to contact the supervisors within each district, and also for the board to come up with two alternates. I've also included the resolution, draft resolution, that will be brought forward probably at the regular meeting in October, identifying who these board dequalification participants will be, and also setting the monetary rate of $135 per meeting attended. So this is just a reminder that we have posted it in the table, we have it on the website, but we definitely need help to shape provisions and get some qualified applicants that you can recommend out of the district areas.
Is anybody applied yet? Have a person for the numbers, Jeff, right? So you're up? Yeah. You gotta get to work, you didn't ask anybody yet?
Yeah. Ms. Tastner, I noticed in 2015, the rate was substantially less, is there?
It was 125, I believe.
Oh, please.
It was in the, it was 125 or 50.
It started at 50, yeah.
That's what I saw.
Thank you. Thanks, guys, we'll be happy.
Sorry, it's turn on, share. There's, you need one from each district, be sure.
Yes, one from each district, and then if the board could come up with two alternates.
Typically of that, okay.
You'll notice in the memo, the, the requirement for the experience of those on the board with regards to other real estate, developing, building, legal, and financial. Next item we have on the agenda, board supervisors' comments, I think I started with Bill last one, so I'll start with Ed, just, we didn't start with you last night, I'd be able to start with Bill this time.
I don't want, he took me back.
Yeah.
He said that's the. I'm gonna be honest, with all the rules going around, I'm not gonna hold back anything. We're gonna work through all this, we're gonna collect the tax, and make this thing okay again, this will work out. Going back to the lady with Ward building, God bless her, my last two builds, four months, nine months, so I know, I know her pain. And really, I, ladies, y'all turned out to be always thankful, and the people on Zoom that come in, yes, we do appreciate it. I told Travis to count about four times, we've signed all of the little hundreds in the background, but anyhow, y'all have a good evening, we will work this out, we'll make it work, and give it a life of choice, you've got to make this county work, thank you.
Thanks, everyone, for coming, for coming, thanks for sticking out, those of you that have, obviously, we've discussed a lot tonight, and I think I made clear earlier what my thoughts and situation were, I'll say this, I've always made myself available to anybody with questions, including the media, and, you know, I wish that we had been given an opportunity, if, if an article of that was going to be published, to make a deeper perspective on it, because I certainly think that what, that final product was, was so far off of what was presented to us in that last meeting. And, you know, Mr. Wood's right, I mean, I've had people come to me, asking me, you know, where this stolen money's going, and I tell them, just, you know, we, we've never implied or stated that that was ever a consideration, so, you know, I can apologize for the title of review, but I'm sorry that happened. Otherwise, Bill's completely right, we, we need to work through this, and we need to work through this together, so I would encourage everybody, I would encourage our staff, commissioner staff, treasurer's staff, we need to come into this with a team attitude, we're all in the, you know, we're all in the same building, we're all the same issue, okay? So that, that's the, the spirit of camaraderie, that would encourage us all to propagate and try to work together, and be respectful of each other at all times. And, and that's my piece on that. Now, to, to go back to this issue on the water, who, okay, can we get that on a work session or something, that we can just understand this process? Because that's obviously not an issue in my district, so I'm, I'm not familiarized myself with it at all, if I, you know, we, this board could probably become familiar with, who manages that, what, what charges there are, and try to understand what the justification is, and then just kind of have a review, because I can't recall ever, have had one such review, so, I'll let's get that on a work session sometime in the future. And I think that's it, so.
But we do, I mean, with that, that's just for the best I can tell everybody, breaks the queue, so.
Does that, does that have anything to do with this revenue matrix here showing 82,000 extra dollars collected or awarded?
Some connection fees, yes, that also offsets the cost of, of infrastructure, and investments in infrastructure.
Can't imagine that.
Well, I think some of that in that particular category, that's going to be connection rules, right? That's different than the billing issue we're talking about, connection fees are.
I'm just saying bill, work, work, I can't manage.
Believe me, I can't either when I write the check. It's just like, like, bill, sometimes eight, nine hundred dollars a month. Let's do it. Yeah, just, for one thing, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight, we have discussed some pretty important things tonight, and Sam presented some things that I'm very concerned with. The founder of Brightman, who was doing our reassessment process, used to work with, his names, one of the names. He should, many of these questions, he should have had firsthand experience. And he's going to be, he's going to be our assessor, you know, just doesn't look, it's not, it's not a good, but that's just me. I've always been one to look at the whole body of evidence, and, you know, the things that have happened are very unfortunate, especially with her, you know, he's, he's a lifelong friend, and for him to be ridiculed the way that he has, it's pretty concerning. Anyway, thanks again, and that's about it.
Just reiterating what everyone said, that's unfortunate, some of the things that have happened this past couple of weeks, we won't get through it. I want to thank everybody for coming, showing your interest, getting involved, not just sitting on Facebook and swinging arrows, but coming in, listening, showing up on Zoom, we enjoy the participation. Thanks to the staff, thanks to those, Harry, good luck, retirement is good, most times.
You know, that's one of the things we like for coming, like I said, this is one of our largest crowds up, maybe, Bill had told people at West Point Schools at school classes or something, we're busting them all, like, just a couple of years back, I hear somebody that's the first district of Idaho.
Oh, that's the first, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's one of the audience, not stable, yeah, yeah, that was good, so you got a concern that we were following a little rules there, but I guess, nobody's.
Yeah, we're, 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 I apologize.
Yeah, thanks, but again, like I said, like we had a pool room here, standing room only outside, and we had, I think up to 38 at the time, it wasn't more.
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine, I mean, soon, so, that's amazing, so, thank you everybody for coming. And I just wanted to mention too, I should have said it during our moment of silence as well, I thought we were going to have something this month for Brendan, former colleague, Mr. Hugie, so, said, I wasn't going to do this, but Mr. Hugie Rivera passed away, I think we'll do something for him in the future, hopefully we'll get something, maybe a plaque or something here, as the administration does, we're working on that later, and it's a horrible way to pass away, much less pass away, a situation like that all of a sudden, I was to him and his family, he must have given analysis. Thanks, everybody, for coming, and do we have, and Chair, do we have beautiful, careful weather, I'm making a motion, we're here. So, motion made, probably seconded, open, Mr. Lawrence?
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Skowski?
I'll rise in favor.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye. Thank you very much. Sure. Thank you very much.